You are listening to WBTN Community Supported Radio. And it's time now for a special edition of News and Views. Coming to you live this evening from the fabulous multipurpose room high atop the Bennington Firehouse here in beautiful downtown Bennington, Vermont. We have assembled for you this evening all eight candidates for the Bennington Select Board. To my right, Peter Brady Senior, Donald Campbell, Jim Carroll, and Joey Culkin. And to my left, Richard Pembroke, Don Miller, Michael McDonough, and Ed Laterno. The format for this evening's candidate forum is pretty straightforward. We have a list of questions. We'll ask them one at a time. Each candidate will have two minutes in which to provide a response. When we're done with the questions, each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. Mr. Brady will be the first candidate to answer the first question. If everybody is ready, the first question is, what initiatives can the Select Board take to help support our schools? Mr. Brady?
Well, first thing I would, with all the recent activity we've seen with the drug arrests and people getting help with that and a new rehab in town, I would see if some of the, we could get some of the people that have pled guilty to speak to the kids and help the kids out and let, you know, do before and after pictures of their lives. The other thing I think they could do that would be a significant help to the schools would be grow the grant list. Right now, everything is strapped because of the, the grant list has been growing at such a slow rate, it's hard to increase spending on anything.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Well, I think there's lots of things we could be doing and we all probably bring a little something different to this. One of the things that I'm particularly, feel particularly strongly about is that we try to connect our, the people that we're growing up, our youngsters, into the job market that we have coming towards them. So, I think that some of the projects that are already underway need to be expanded upon. So, these are the kind of things that will help our students come out and be job-ready, so to speak. There's an awful lot of talk about local employers who can't find the skill level that they need in order to hire. And so, that's one thing we need to be working on. Another thing that I think is really important is to continue to connect our youth with the food system. So, I've recently joined this pretty exciting group that's doing the sustainable agricultural, sustainable food stuff up at the middle school. And that's a group that's looking into connecting the kids not only with their food sources, but also how to grow them and how to get the food sources into the cafeteria. The third thing that I think is pretty exciting that's going on and needs to be expanded are the connections to the local colleges. So, the more we can help the kids get into the community college classes and the Williams College and Bennington College, I think the more advanced they'll be and the better education they'll get. So, those are three things and there are many more, but that's enough for right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carroll?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with the people of Bennington. The other night when the school board spoke about, you know, the budget, we spent a great deal of time talking about the dollars and cents that we spend. And I asked what I thought was a pertinent question, and that is, what are we getting on the end? That is to say, how, at the end of a student's high school education, what kind of placement, placements are we getting? Now, granted, a third of students that graduate from Mount Anthony are gonna go on to college. A third are gonna stay in the community, and a third are not gonna do so well. I asked for more direct measurements about where students are going. And I really, quite frankly, did not get a satisfactory answer because I think the bottom line, when it comes to every single dollar that's invested locally in schools, there ought to be a measurable return with respect to students' overall success over time. And they, I was, I did, I was told that there is, I think, a three in a six-year measure about where graduates go and how well they do. But I think more importantly, I was part of a study three years ago shortly after I got elected that addressed the needs of our current employers here in Bennington. And I think we need to gear students' abilities to filling local jobs. During the short time before I got elected, I went to our employers and asked them if they were able to fill the jobs, and they said no.
And I'll have to stop you right there. We're gonna move on to Mr. Culkin.
Thank you. Thank you WBTN and CAT TV for hosting this forum and for all you fellows for showing up again. In terms of the question, what initiatives should we take to help support our schools? We have some, some really good programs right now. Off the top of my head, Quantum Leap, which was spearheaded by Bennington College, Susan Scorebody fifteen, twenty years ago. It really connects teachers to students at an age and, you know, we're able to identify, you know, who might be in trouble at a certain age, and we get them into good programs for high school. At high school, and it really helps focus them, you know, by putting, channeling them into some great classes. Teens for Change is another great program that connects community and schools. That being said, this is an education issue, and I think it's best to leave educational issues to, you know, those who are involved with education. Another, I think, important thing for the community here to hear is, we need to do a better job of studying those who run for school board and electing a much stronger school board. We need competent teachers and educators setting the agenda from the top down. The teachers do a great job in our schools, but they're only doing, you know, what they're mandated to do. And I wonder if the direction they're getting isn't so strong, and so, it'd be great. With all the education and studying we do to elect a Select Board, I think we should use the same diligence to elect school board members. It would make all the difference in the world.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Laterno?
The question is a very interesting one. There are certain position, elected positions, that are prohibited from serving the community on a Select Board and also serving on a school board or within a school district. And I can't elaborate on what they are because I'd have to go look up the law. What a board of selectors could probably do to help schools out would be to lower costs where possible. I think that we could have lower fees when we need police presence at school dams. Perhaps the police department could be educating schools a little bit more on what some of the problems are that might require police presence there, and maybe we can eliminate it. I think the town could also lower things such as the fees that are paid for permits whenever the school wants to make a change. I suppose there's ways to share snow plowing of school grounds as well as a repair of lots and so forth. And certainly, they, there's probably ways that you can lower the cost of water and sewer fees for the schools.
Okay.
Those are direct things that a Select Board can do. The other areas is just providing more information. We need more discourse between town officials and school officials on a certain level. And I'm not sure what that is, but I'll be glad to look into it in the future.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McDonough?
Thank you, Bob. Despite the fact that we have separate governance in our state for both municipalities and for our school systems, there's an important partnership that must exist between the two. I think that there have been very positive developments in the past few years that have increased communication between the town and its Select Board and our school boards. A classic example of that was the joint presentation made Monday night in this room by both the SVSU and its school boards and the Select Board about the upcoming budget votes and how those budgets were structured. We have common goals, the municipality and the school system. The municipality is charged with educating our young people. We need educated young people for the community to survive. We, as a municipality, have a responsibility to see to it that our community grows and develops in a way that provides a quality of life for our young people who receive that education to move into the workforce, to become professionals. That partnership is, is a give and take. It's a quid pro quo. It's essential to the life of the community. I think that as we look around Bennington and take pride in the things that we have in our community, I think we can take pride in the things that the municipality is responsible for. Our downtown, our developed areas, and we can take pride in our school system that provides a vital service to the community.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you WBTN and CAT TV for hosting this. I think the, the question is, is probably a very, very good one. It's sort of narrow. What can the Select Board do on a matter of education of schools? And there is the division. But we clearly have common interests, nothing more important than our young people and education. And, and perhaps it's a challenge to our, our governance structure to find ways to work more often and more different ways. I mean, the obvious municipal responsibilities are probably the infrastructure, the police and rec departments and some of those things, but you, you can certainly broaden into partnerships and working with others, perhaps individually, but I think that's part of the challenges to, to take a look and see what ways there are to work collaboratively with other organizations. You know, jobs, anything that helps with job training would be obvious. When working, we have, we have tremendous resources in our colleges, and so bridging there is fantastic. The arts, the arts and culture opportunities we have. So, we have a lot of opportunities. Structurally, there may be some limitations, but those are the kind of things I think we need to be looking at and spending more time and energy to, to bridge those gaps and to create opportunities and, and focus on the young people.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pembroke?
First of all, thank you, Robert, for moderating this. Thanks to WBTN and CAT TV for broadcasting this for us. Let me start by, by saying there's a great deal of cooperation that takes place now between the schools and the town. I'm not gonna go list a number of them, but there is significant work that's being done. The specific question though is what initiatives the Select Board could take. The biggest difficulty is our schools have been forced to go beyond the responsibility of educating students to providing social services that were never designed or even thought of being delivered in our school system. That's not the fault of the town, per se. It's more a fault of the state. And when they're cutting back funding, they naturally just put the responsibilities into the next logical governmental structure that they can pass it on to, which in this case is, is largely the school system. Some specific initiatives that I think the Select Board could take would be to help with the after-school program. It's been widely publicized that we lost some significant money there. And jobs, it comes back to jobs. If we can grow our economy and produce some jobs to help raise the revenue for our town that will give us a better opportunity to help support the schools in those social service areas.
Mr. Campbell will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, would Bennington's children be better off if we fluoridated our water supply? Mr. Campbell?
You weren't gonna let us off that one, were you? All right. Well, I, I voted today, and I'll tell you how I voted. If you'll listen to me tell you why I voted the way I did. I thought the forums were excellent. I thought it was great that we had so many, so many people bringing so much information to the table. I thought it was really overwhelming in a way and very difficult to sort through it all, but a lot of us worked hard on it, and there's a lot of other information that can be had. For the most part, I think I would tend to, well, there's lots of information out there. The piece that was not clear to me from the forums was exactly what the cost of this is going to be. And we never really got into that in the first forum, and we never really got into that in the second forum. There was implication from some of the people that were for fluoride that it might be $6,000 a year or something, and there were implications from the people who were against it that it might be a couple hundred thousand, based on a Brattleboro study and whatnot. So, it feels to me like if we're really doing a serious cost-benefit analysis, what's the cost of doing this fluoridation and what are we gonna get out of it? We need to know exactly what it's gonna cost us, or at least we need to have a sense of, of really what the hard costs are gonna be. If, if we don't pass this, this article, then as far as I'm concerned, the Select Board should not keep going on that process. But if we do pass it, the Select Board will have the opportunity, I would say, to instruct the town to try to get numbers and figure out exactly what the cost would be, and then the Select Board would be in a position where they would be able to make a cost-benefit analysis and make a decision. So, I actually voted for the, for the fluoride proposition.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
This was, let me say first that, you know, I'm, I'm a big believer in science. And from most of the, just about all of the scientific information that I've been able to analyze and look at and listen, listen to, I trust that, you know, hundreds of thousands of doctors, dentists, the CDC, the AMA, the ADA would do nothing that would violate the Hippocratic oath that all doctors and dentists take, and that is to first, do no harm. Therefore, I cannot believe that all of these dedicated doctors and dentists would, would introduce an element, a mineral, into our water system that would harm people. Nevertheless, I take nothing away from those people who are opposed to it, who think that it's an introduction of a chemical into their bodies that they object to. Now, be that as it may, the bottom line for me is that if the people of Bennington don't want it, that's the final word. On a personal note, I believe in science. I believe that the things that I've read and that I've listened to, and I've listened to both sides, that I think it is to the benefit of people. But the bottom line is the people of Bennington have a right not to introduce it into the water system.
Okay, Mr. Culkin?
So, I grew up with fluoride and have pretty good teeth. I went to the dentist a few weeks ago, and she looked at my gums and just said I have phenomenal gums, not to brag, but, you know, forty-three in this town, and she was blown away, and she knew that I grew up with it. I think there are many great benefits to it. Nobody's died from it. I know that, you know, the anti-fluoride crowd, you know, tried to throw out some scare tactics. I went to the pro side and they presented, you know, their side very well. Both sides presented pretty well, you know, for what they believe in. Personally, I'm gonna vote yes for it because I see the benefits it has had for me, and for, you know, people I know and also grew up with fluoride, they have no problem with it. Really close friends who have children too, who have no problem because they know the benefits. That being said, I can make a personal choice of yes. I'm gonna vote yes for me. At the same time, I have a hard time telling people who do not want fluoride or chemicals or anything, whatever it is, if they don't want it in their water, in their bodies, and if they don't want it in their children's bodies, I would have a hard time making that decision for them. So, I'll wait for the advisory vote, and if more people say yes, hey, I'll vote yes if I'm on the Select Board. If more people say no, I'll listen to the people of Bennington and I'll vote no. I just know for me, it's worked for me, and it's worked for everyone that I know who grew up with fluoride. And it's, it's not a big boogeyman to be scared of. It works. But that being said, I'm gonna listen to the people of Bennington, and we'll wait to see what the results are in a couple days.
Okay, Mr. Laterno?
I haven't made a final decision yet on which way I will go if I'm elected. I suspect that I will vote no. I have a problem with some of the science. It's mixed on both ends. The older science appears to say that it's good. Some of the newer scientific reports that are out there appear to say that it's bad. I know that fluoride is listed in our town water, water quality reports as a toxic chemical, which makes me wonder why it's a good thing. And there are three different levels that I've found of the amount that is good for people and bad for people from two different government agencies. So, there is an issue with the quality of the information that we've been given on this. I also have an issue with who's going to pay for this? Is it only gonna be the people in the town of Bennington that are on the water system? Is this going to include people in North Bennington adding fluoride to their system? Do we have to add fluoride to the pumps, pumping system out of Morgan Springs? And who's gonna pay for all this? Not quite fair to charge thirty-seven hundred people on the water system for something that may not serve the entire community. And that needs to be resolved, as well as the, the cost of what it's going to be.
Okay, Mr. McDonough?
As a matter of public health policy, I support fluoridation. I have listened to the discussions. I've listened to the passion on both sides. But I've concluded that I believe in the positions taken by those who feel that fluoridation would have a positive impact, especially on our youth, but on our entire population. And the delivery system of a municipal water system, I believe, is an effective way to accomplish that. Now, the question has not come before the Select Board yet. The question is being put to our citizenry. Ultimately, the question will come to the Select Board. And there are a number of factors that the Select Board will be taking into account. And I think I, I would not, at this point, commit to supporting the introduction of fluoridation into our water system because it depends on many factors. The cost of doing that being, being one. But having listened to both sides, my position would be that if we are able to reasonably introduce fluoridation to our water system from the standpoint of cost and operationally, then I would ultimately support doing that.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
I don't think there's any question fluoride would be a benefit. I think the question is, what's the best way to, to do that? I was very, I have to applaud the, the people who have worked so hard for so long in the last two, three years to bring this issue to the fore, and I think that they've done a wonderful job of raising the issue. Both forums were, were very informative. I still have a lot of questions. I think I came away with more questions than, than I had answered, and then serious questions. And I'm, I'm very happy that people from both forums have provided me with just tons of information, and I wish it was more information, more links to places where I have to go and do it, and do the research. And that's my bent, is to do the research, do the analysis, so I'm not, that doesn't bother me that much. I, I'm looking forward this weekend to, to taking the time to go to a lot of those lengths and look at the scientific research, the older studies, the newer studies, particularly concerned about potential negative effects. But beyond that, I think the cost issue is very important. There's different opinions on, or different things have been said about what it costs. The Brattleboro study referred to one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand to get the system set up. I don't think that's an ongoing cost. I think there may be an initial cost, but I don't know what ours would be. So, I definitely think you'd have to go through a cost-benefit analysis, and ultimately, if, this is an opportunity for people to decide. What a great opportunity. So, I hope there's a big turnout. I hope there's a big vote on it, and I'd be very interested in how that vote comes out. If people don't want it, that'd be very impressive.
Okay, Mr. Pembroke?
I hope I didn't misunderstand the question. I, I interpreted the question as, will our youth be better off with fluoridation in the water? And that's where I'm gonna focus my answer on. And ironically, I was at a meeting today, and I was approached by a very staunch supporter of the fluoride who very readily admitted and was requesting assistance from me and the group I was in to help promote the kids from stop drinking soda and eating candy because fluoridation isn't gonna solve the problem. And that's been my concern about the whole time, is we focused on a mass medication of our water system and a mass medication of our population, where I think the true root cause of the problem isn't necessarily the total lack of fluoridation because there's many opportunities for people to access fluoridation. It's the poor eating habits that we have created in our society, and I for one am a witness, or is a witness of that sitting here today. I don't think the fluoridation is gonna solve the problem we're trying to, trying to solve. And I guess I was fortunate that lady came to me today because it gave me the answer to this question. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brady?
Personally, I'm not in favor of it. I think it's mass medicating. Some of the studies I've seen, the newer studies, there are links to Alzheimer's in the older people. It is a toxin, and it builds up in the body, and it doesn't leave the body. Between Dr. Dinosaur, Medicaid, Obamacare, every child in Bennington should be covered by insurance. Every child could get a prescription for fluoride pills. That's what I did with my children, gave them fluoride pills, had them do the swish and spit. And again, I still think it comes down to genetics. My daughter had my teeth, had three fillings. My son, who probably slacked a little more than his sister, has perfect teeth and not a, not a cavity in his mouth. I'd also question whether the Water Board has the authority to put fluoride in the water. The statute says they can only purify. So, I think if the voters approve it and the Select Board votes to do it, you might see a lawsuit pop up. There may be an injunction to stop it. Do we wanna go down that road with legal litigation? As a member of the Board, the advisory vote, if the people say yes, they want it, then I will go along with what the people say.
Mr. Carroll will be the first candidate to answer the next question. If you were able to fully fund one infra- If you were able to fully fund one infrastructure improvement for the people of Bennington, what would it be? Mr. Carroll?
Well, I don't know whether it would qualify as an infrastructure project, but what I would suggest, and I spoke about this in the last candidate's forum, and that is floating a bond to purchase the Putnam Hotel Greenberg property. I think this is an, an opportunity that we cannot pass up. The Greenberg property, for the last twenty years, for all intents and purposes, has been falling into the ground. And to the best, most reliable information that I've gotten from those that should know, the Greenberg family is not interested in breaking this, this property up. And Bennington has an opportunity to come and take this property and, and do what needs to be done. People for twenty years, or more, have been talking about the Putnam Hotel and what can be done about it. Well, here's an opportunity for, to do what is possible, instead of believing what is impossible. I spoke with the owner of Old Castle Theater today, who said he would buy the old KSC, which now houses Old Castle. And we, during the course of floating that bond, if we got the property under contract with the Greenbergs, we would miss no opportunity at collecting property taxes through the Greenbergs. But in the meantime, in the meantime, we could get under contract the, the different pieces of that property that would get that property back on the market. We could restart the, the Greenberg hardware store, and therefore, over time, reduce what would be a two-point-seven million-dollar bond with, with, with taking under contract the properties-
I'll have to stop you there so we can move on. Mr. Culkin?
I think we need to clean ourselves up from within and start to present ourself to the outside world again. And if I could dedicate resources to one thing that I think would open us up again and make us attractive, it's our outdoor infrastructure. We have a ton of bike trails. We have a ton of walking trails. We have the Morgan Street Wetlands. We have Mount, we have Mount Anthony, Willow Park, Lake Perrin. We have so many great outdoor recreational facilities. I would love to be able to link them all together. For us, first and foremost, create healthy living. You know how many people wanna go walking at night with their dogs, with their kids, with their family? Might wanna take their kids on the trails during the weekend. I think a comprehensive outdoor network of trails for walking, biking, any other activities. And there's some great stats that explain why it's important, you know, for, you know, beyond the health factor. There were two-hundred-and-thirty-three bike pedestrian jobs. The, the state did a report on the economic impact in two thousand nine, two thousand ten or so. Biking, pedestrian trails creates two-hundred-and-fifty or so jobs, ten million in payroll. Towns that have biking trails and walking trails and whatnot, there have been forty events, you know, in the last few years. Sixteen thousand participants come to town, family, friends, participants. That raises, you know, that supports a hundred-and-sixty jobs, about five million dollars in earnings. And job, you know, real paychecks here. Bike tourism, jobs, infrastructure, Vermont in two thousand and nine produced fourteen-hundred jobs and about forty-one million dollar in labor earnings. So the point being, you know, people will come to Bennington, young families will move to Bennington.
And I'll have to stop you there so we can move on. Mr. Letourneau?
I suppose in terms of just infrastructure, there's two things that I would like the town to do. One would involve using some of the vacant lots that are in downtown and perhaps turning them into a park. Or maybe we can create some kind of initiative that would bring back the YMCA. It's still a viable organization in other parts of the country, and maybe they needed a little bit of help, and the kids used to love it. I certainly did as a kid. The other area of infrastructure that I definitely know needs work is some real analysis on the water system and probably on the sewer system to find out if what we're paying every year in water and sewer fees is legitimately being used, or are we projecting that things need to be repaired when in fact we might have another thirty or forty or fifty years of life to all the pipes that we're now paying, paying into a fund for to replace? That's it.
Okay, Mr. McDonough?
Understand that it's a hypothetical question, but I, I'm inclined to not answer it as a hypothetical question. I'm, I'm not sure I wanna take that bait. The role of a select board within a community is to make choices on behalf of that community, and to make those choices based on our abilities to pay, our abilities, our needs, a whole host of factors. And I have never believed that there is one piece of municipal government that stands out above all the rest in terms of making the quality of our life better. And so I'm reluctant to say I would fix this or that. I think that all of the ideas that have been suggested prior to me are all worthy of consideration. But as a select board, what we must do is take incremental steps and make incremental choices on things that will advance our community in terms of growth, in terms of maintenance, so that our community remains vital into the future. We have a great many things that we need to do, and many of those are in the area of infrastructure. But we can't avoid any one issue which we face. The select board must address all of the, the challenges that face us as a community on an incremental basis.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
I'll take the bait. I, I agree, there's a lot of good ideas we've heard that could be considered and would be good to discuss. But if we were gonna focus on one, and I guess I'm agreeing with Mike here, right, right now, we have some tax issues, some grand list issues, and that, I think, suggests that we need to have some sort of a schedule of water projects and, and road projects, some of the basic fundamental services or facilities that, that the town provides. My idea, not new, I'm sure, but to consider would be a bond. Interest rates are as low as they have ever been. If you're going to borrow, which I don't necessarily like, not a bad time. What I would wanna do is, is see an inventory, see what the plan is. The recent budget discussions pointed out that we're not replacing the roads as rapidly as we perhaps would want to. Well, let's take a look at our roads and their needs. Let's take a look at the water and sewer structure, which is so much a part of the roads, they're underneath, and chart out what our needs are. And perhaps now's the time to go for a bond and try to level that out so that we don't end up with more serious problems down the road. What, is there an order in which we could take them now that would make sense, that would reduce some of the future costs? And so that would be the one area that pops out to me as perhaps the way to start, or a place to look now.
Okay, Mr. Pembroke?
I agree that I think it's a near impossible question because I'm not sure what the, how to define infrastructure. Does a sewer line start at the four corners and end at County Street, or is it the entire sewer project? You know, we, we have, we have some tough infrastructure in this community. We're not repairing our roads as fast as we can, as much as we'd like. I've, I've heard the horror stories about our water and sewer infrastructure. I'd like to see some more data to understand if, how bad that truly is. I've been recommending for two or three years of significant bond to fix what we can fix. And a bond makes sense if you do the right projects and it gives you the right useful life so that you're not bonding to fix a street that you gotta fix in five years from now. You've gotta do the right construction. You've gotta build it from the base up. You know, we've got some significant bridge problems. I know the state helps us with the majority, if not all of them, with some significant money, but often that is at their timeline and not necessarily ours. And I hope we don't get to the point where we're gonna regret that. But I, it's hard to pick one project because there, there's some significant needs in the community. I will tie back to the recreation, back to the school issue. I think we, we've neglected our rec center for far too long. Frankly, I think it should've been expanded a number of years ago in a number of ways. We need basketball facilities. We need a hockey facility in this community. Those are just a few to, to, to name. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brady?
As far as the water projects that need to be done, I think it is a, an ideal time to look into bonding. I'm not saying we should bond, but let's at least get the details and see if it'll stabilize our tax rate over the years. The road projects that need to be done, we used to do twelve miles a year. We're down to three to six miles a year. And again, grow the grand list and we can start accomplishing this. But if I were to fully fund an initiative in this town, of my choice, I would put in incubator building like we used to have in North Bennington. The BCIC used to run one over there, and that's where we got employers like Drillmaster and several others. They came in, they were local entrepreneurs. They came in and started from scratch. They got a cheap rent available to them, decent utilities, and they grew businesses there. And that's what they're doing in Brattleboro right now. That's how they turn things around. And we're not gonna see another big manufacturer come in here that's gonna hire three or four-hundred people. It's impossible with the agreements that the Congress is signing for these international trade agreements. We're gonna need local entrepreneurs, like the gentleman that was in last Thursday's paper, that came up with the system to keep ice and, and snow off the roofs. You know, if we could bring that into an incubator building and work on that, it'd be amazing what we could do. You know, twenty-five people go in there and start a business, that creates twenty-five, thirty jobs. We're in much better position.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Well, I too am going to take the bait. I, there are so many things that would be fun to do. It's a little bit difficult going last because all these great things get thrown out. But I would say it boils down to three words: things to do. And when I've been out talking to people, I have heard from every single person that I've talked to that we need more things to do in Bennington for our kids, for ourselves. Everything that we invest in should be, our, our test should be, is it making us a stronger community? Is it making us a happier community? And so specifically, I would love to see us make as many investments as we can. And I'm not quite sure if the, if the hypothetical question means within our means, or if it means we have a pot of money to do it with. But if, if we had a pot of money to do it with, I would love to invest in our recreational infrastructure. So it's already been said, but I think that the, the rec center is really important to us. I think a, an ice skating ring, that kind of thing would be wonderful. But as much as anything else, everybody probably knows I'm an outdoors person, I would really love to see us continue to develop our access to the outdoors. I think that's our ace in the hole. We've got a twenty-two-thousand-acre designated wilderness area up on the mountain behind us, and we've got lakes and rivers and streams, and the more we can develop that, the more we can get outside, the healthier and the happier I think we'll be. So those are the investments I'd like to see the most.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Culkin will be the first candidate to answer the next question, which is, are property taxes too high in Bennington? If so, what specific cuts would you make to the town budget to ease the burden on us taxpayers? Mr. Culkin?
Well, it's a mouthful. I don't know if I have a very good answer for that. You know, it's something I would have to do a lot of studying on, and you know, that's, I think, something a group aboard the community can discuss. So, you know, without sounding, you know, throwing out this or that, or bad numbers, I'm just gonna pass and say it's, I, I don't know enough about it right now, but I would certainly love to be in the conversation and discuss it and, you know, be a part of a group that throws out ideas and that can embrace them and talk about them and, you know, make these kinds of decisions, so. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Letourneau?
I don't think property taxes per se are too high. I think they're higher than they have to be. What I think is too high is the eight-hundred dollars a year that people within the, the village are paying for water and sewer that are added on top of the property taxes. That number comes out to be more than most people are paying in school taxes around the community. I suspect that we are, we could cut three or four-hundred dollars out of those water and sewer fees and not damage the community, but we do need to do some studies on what the problems are, and that may mean digging up pieces of pipe, maybe cutting them out and sending them out for non-destructive testing so that we have a real view of what the lifetime is of the street, infrastructure that is already installed. In some cases, I know we've replaced water lines that we were told they were sixty years old, and yet the EPA and the American Water Works Association tells us that ductile iron pipes are good for an average of a hundred-and-ten years. So there's a disconnect between the information we've been giving, given, and what the town is doing.
Okay, Mr. McDonough?
Well, I think others have said, define what's too high. I think one of the ways that you can, you can attempt to define that is, is to say, well, if a municipal budget was voted down, then perhaps one reason for that is that the taxes resulting from that budget are too high. Ultimately, we do place the responsibility of making that determination in the hands of the voters. That said, I think that as select board members, our role is to be as efficient with the monies that can be generated from our grand list as we possibly can be, to maintain the level of services and the quality of life, as I've said, that our community deserves and demands. I think that we, as a governing body, have the responsibility of seeing to it that we have the tools in place to allow for our grand list to not only remain stable but to grow so that we can afford many of the needs that we have without it being on the backs of those in our community who find it difficult to pay for those services through their property taxes. And so I, I'm, I'm not inclined to talk about what's too high and what's not too high. Again, I go back to the process of deliberation that a municipality must undertake in order to see to it that what we ask of the voters is correct.
And I'll have to stop you there so we can move on. Mr. Miller?
I think the select board has to hear, has to listen to the taxpayers. Many, many feel that their taxes have been going up too much, too fast, too consistently, three-hundred dollars, four-hundred dollars a year. That's, that's a big chunk, especially when you've got people on fixed incomes or, or going through economically difficult times. A simple answer, and we've talked, I'm sure about it before, is to try to grow the grand list, and that in itself is the challenge, and it's part of what we all ought to be thinking about, is what ways can we help the grand list grow? And, and it's not something that a select board absolutely controls. But we need to be looking for ways to, all the time, to try to increase that grand list. At the same time, I think it's very important that we listen to the people that are feeling the real- that are feeling the real pinch on the, on the taxes. Getting down to what do you cut, that was the other half of the question, that's very difficult. I don't know that there's any simple answer. You hate to cut services. What we're doing is pretty important across the board, but I think that's part of that longer-term deliberative process and, and the study of the budget. I don't think you do it all in the month or two of preparing a budget. I think it's something you have to look at beyond the budget time period and, and look for ways to, yes, grow the grand list, but look for ways to maybe spend the money a different way or more sharply. But I mentioned the bond, spreading it out, perhaps spreading it out, perhaps avoiding future problems, perhaps taking care of the problems when they're smaller, somehow getting an organization to it. And it's, it's a huge challenge, but I think it's extremely important that we listen to what the taxpayers are saying and look for ways to do it.
Okay, Mr. Pembroke?
Yes, they're too high. Part of the reason they're too high is the school system makes up 61% of that tax rate. Of that 61%, 13 cents of that tax rate is a product of having a CLA, Common Level of Appraisal, that is less than 100%. The town has money set aside for reappraisal that they have not done. You can lower your taxes by getting that appraisal done, bringing everything up to 100% or in some cases maybe down to 100%. And then you can grow your grand list. We talked about it last time. I know some people think that I'm a broken record, but we need to increase revenue, and we can increase revenue by growing the grand list. We can lower the tax rate by not cutting anything, by spending some reserve money we have that's already earmarked for reappraisal that'll drop the education portion of the tax rate. The grand list is what's going to be ultimately the driver that's going to give us the real money we need to not only lower taxes but to reinvest in other areas of the community.
Okay, Mr. Brady?
When I was in the legislature, I voted against Act 60 for these specific reasons that we're sitting here talking about high taxes tonight. There were no spending caps in that bill, and that has, that's what has led to this dilemma we're in. And if you go out and talk to people in the stores and at their homes, and their taxes are too high. There's no doubt about it. What do we do? Grow the grand list. Just a simple change of zoning on Northside Drive, Johnson Controls, we get $7,000 a year for that property. If it were to be developed, it'd be anywhere from 200, 250,000. But as that happens, as we've seen the interest peak on Northside Drive with just the expansion of Walmart, you would see other companies come in and start buying up the more dilapidated properties down there, and the grand list would grow more through that. Another option we have available, we'd have to work with the legislature, the board would have to work with the legislature, again, is to get the 1% option tax. It would be voted on by the voters of Bennington, but if it passed and we got it, got it through the legislature and then the voters approved it, it would be a million dollars a year to Bennington from a 1% increase in the sales tax. There are some other things I would suggest, you know, maybe a freeze and raises and hiring till we get the grand list going. And other, we can consolidate some things. I think you have three different people doing Stephen Jessick's old job. He was a zoning administrator, building inspector, and health officer. You know, we could consolidate some services too, I think.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, our taxes are too high, right? So when, since the time of the Romans, has anybody complained, my taxes are too low, right? So, we all feel our taxes are too high. And I think legitimately, New Hampshire has the second highest tax rate in the nation. Vermont's number seven. But if you look at our tax rate as a ratio of our ability to earn an income, our median income, we're number two. So part of the problem is that we're a high tax rate in a low, medium income state. And that's a difficult thing to align. One of the things that we have to do though, I feel, is to make sure that we're, when we're talking about our taxes, we're talking about our values. So we're talking about where we're putting our money. It's worth noting that our school board does a fantastic job of doing a budget. They, they're proposing a budget this year that the spending is actually below the median spending for the state. So the spending for MAU is some $600 below what the average is on a statewide basis. Now, Mr. Pembroke could tell you much more about this than I can, but, but we're below average, so we're saving some tax money on that. But is that where we want to be? Do we want to be investing in our kids? Do we want to be paying a little bit more taxes? There's a values conversation there, and I think everybody needs to be engaged in that. The other thing that I worry a little bit about is that when we look at our municipal taxes, they do a fantastic job of holding them down, 1% growth a year or something like that. Anyway, below the, below the CPI, below the rate that money is increasing in value over time. But should we be letting those taxes go up so we can fund other things? That's another values question, and I hope we can have those as a community.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
Yes, we pay too much in taxes, but I can't think of a year or a time when I've ever said to myself, I don't think I've quite paid enough. For the last three years, I've been a part of budget negotiations with the different departments. And I've got to tell you, I give all the credit in the world to our different departments in the town. You know, everybody hates to pay taxes, but everybody wants their road taken care of, they want their, their road plowed. And I've said before, and I'll say it again, if there were easy answers, we'd have them done. But bottom line for me, it always come, it comes down to growing the grand list, but the bottom line seriously is economic activity. Getting people into the downtown and making Bennington a more attractive place for people to want to not only come and spend their money, but to come and live. And I'll go back to, again, to this idea of floating the bond for the Greenberg property, that would be an incentive to foster more growth in the town and just getting people excited about what Bennington is and why it's a good place and why it's a good place where you want to live and buy homes and, and be a part of what Bennington is.
Okay. Mr. Laterno would be the first candidate to answer the next question. Is Bennington on its way to becoming a welfare town? If so, what can the select board do to reverse that trend? Mr. Laterno?
I don't know if we are or are not on our way to becoming a welfare town. I've seen indications that it looks that way, but I don't know that it's a valid appraisal. One of the things that the select board could do to help control that is to push on the members of the legislature from down here to apply the same rules to welfare recipients from, as other states do. For example, New York and Massachusetts, I'm told, give people five years, and after that, you don't get any more. And perhaps Vermont needs to apply a rule such as that too, so that they're not moving from New York to Vermont to collect more welfare. And they may need federal legislation to control that information and so forth. I think if the issue is true, and I don't know that it is, that we're becoming a welfare town, that at a certain point, it means that those who do have an income, whether they're working here or it's a fixed income, are going to be forced to leave one way or the other simply because they can't afford to continue to pay taxes when 30% of your population isn't paying taxes. So I don't know the answer, but I think it requires a lot more research and it requires coordination with the state legislature and people upstate and probably the federal, federal government, at least the agencies that can provide some information to verify the proposition.
Okay, Mr. McDonough?
The label of the question is something that has always bothered me, and it, it makes me think of what we've discussed in, in the previous forum. The question of, is, is our image one that, that we manufacture or is it an accurate image of who we are? I think that any community will always have people with needs. I, I think that as a culture and a society, we have a responsibility to people with needs to see to it that they have a way, a method, a, a, a process to get them to a point where they no longer have needs that, that make their lives difficult. Or if they don't have a pathway, then I think it's a responsibility of society to see to it that those people are afforded a reasonable quality of life. So I, I don't like the label at all. And so it prompts me not to even attempt to answer the question because it, it gives credence to that idea of, are we a town of poverty or are we a town of wealth? Now, now we know that there, there's a significant level of poverty within this community, and the, the ways in which that we have to respond to that is not to put a label on it, but to provide people with education and incentive and opportunity to raise their lives out of what we judge to be poverty, to have the quality of life that we all wish.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
I think it's a very important question, and I think we need to study it, we need to look for ways to try to measure it. We have a disadvantage perhaps of being so close to New York and maybe Massachusetts, or it's easy for people to come across the state line. We, we are a county seat, we are a location that dispenses benefits, state benefits. So we're, we're in a particularly vulnerable position, I think, geographically. We know that, we've had some publicity we've talked about before from drugs and drug usage, and I don't think that Bennington is necessarily any worse off than other towns in the state or other states. In fact, I suspect that we're doing a pretty good job of getting a handle on it. I think our, our police department is top-notch, and, and I think it's a primary focus of theirs, and I think that that pays off. But what could be done to reverse it if, if in fact is defined as a problem? I think we should be looking at the identification and eligibility for some of these programs. We don't control them necessarily, but again, we could look at them, try to figure out what's happening, and perhaps more control could be put on the local administration of those benefit programs if that indeed turns out to be a problem. And again, I think working with and encouraging the, the police and the sheriff's department, excellent operations, to, to be vigilant and to do what they can to continue to send a message that you don't need to come here and prey on our less fortunate.
Okay, Mr. Pembroke?
No, I don't believe we're a welfare community. I think we, we have some significant poverty. We're a low-wage community. A lot of people point to the free and reduced lunch populations in our schools to, to define the level of poverty, and that is an indicator. It's not the only indicator. But I can tell you, that poverty level has drastically risen over the last four to five years as a direct result of the loss of jobs in this community. You know, it's, it comes down to the jobs. We have a hard-working community that has lost incomes of 30,000 to 40,000 and are now earning 20,000 to 25,000. That doesn't make them welfare recipients, that doesn't make them part of a welfare community. They're struggling to make ends meet, and we need to focus on the economic development, we need to bring jobs to this community. That's what's going to change our attitudes, that's what's going to change other people's attitudes about us. I talked last time about our advantages of being, you know, three hours away from Montreal, New York, Boston. It's also a disadvantage. You know, we are literally over the border of Massachusetts and New York, and people can traverse back and forth. That contributes to some of the issues that we have. However, we need to change the conversation. We have a lot of things that are going well for us. We have a great natural resource in this community. We need to use that, we need to leverage that, and we need to attract jobs. Jobs is the answer.
Okay, Mr. Brady?
I find that title kind of insulting. Bennington's a, a microcosm of Vermont, of the US, and we're seeing a lot of that going on because of these trade agreements. The jobs that pay 50, 60, 40,000, they're gone overseas. Now, where we're suffering is many other communities have figured out a way to get out of it. We still have not started that. And again, growing your grand list, the way we're going to start to bring people out of poverty, three simple things we could do tomorrow. Change the zoning on Johnson Controls. Take one of the Plaisan buildings as an incubator building to, to start growing some small businesses. Increase our advertising budget. Bennington spends $6,000 a year to advertise itself open for business. I would take money from the BBCs, the 70,000 the town collects for them. I would take money from the Economic Development Department and bring that up to 60, 70,000. Maybe form a partnership for internet with Google, so when you go on searching for places, Bennington pops up. You know, and, and I would make some changes in the Economic Development Office. I would move the assistant town manager and zoning administrator over into that office to work with Michael Harrington, the economic director, and have the two of them out, what they do every week. One of them is out meeting with businesses everywhere and trying to talk them into, here's what we have in Bennington, let's bring you to Bennington. You know, we're here to help with you. You know, we've got to get moving. We're falling further and further behind. Our infrastructure is crumbling, and we're just doing the same things over and over. It's the definition of insanity to keep doing the same thing over and over and over and expecting a different result.
I'll have to stop you there so we can move on. Mr. Campbell?
Well, like others here tonight, I reject the phrase "welfare town." I think it's derogatory, and I don't think it's a very good way to be talking about this issue. We've just come out of a very long, very deep recession that has hurt the whole country, and I think it's hurt Vermont a lot. It's not just Bennington. I, I work around the state, and there are a lot of communities that have really suffered in the past four or five years. When our people suffer, we need to find ways to take care of them. And that has a lot of different components, and sometimes it may feel like we are a welfare town, but we are also a town that's taking care of its own. And the, the bit of truth that I will say is that Bennington is carrying more than its share of the water when it comes to services, but there's a reason for that. So if you, if you need a hip replacement, you don't go to Arlington, you know. If you need, if you need drug rehabilitation services, you don't go to Wilmington. The things that we, that many people need that may come with what we think of as the welfare town also need to be aggregated in a place. So we have great hospital systems, we have good addiction treatment systems coming along and coming online, and we have the Council on the Aging, and we have the state building here, so we have a lot of services. Many of us have been out visiting with people and talking to them, and there are some people who have worked hard all their lives that need help. And I just... And I just, I reject the idea that we would throw those people into a category of welfare town.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
I would agree with the character, I would disagree with the characterization that Bennington is a welfare town. It's a struggling town, there's no doubt about it. It's interesting, I had a conversation today with somebody here who moved up to Bennington about, I guess about ten years ago, from New York City. And I'll tell you, I lived in New York City for almost fifteen, sixteen years, and I can tell you what I was paying in rent down there on a monthly basis, it was close to five thousand bucks a month. And I remember at the time thinking, man, if I was up in Bennington, I'd be living like a king, I'd be living on a multi-acreage plot and, you know, people waiting on me. But here's my idea. With our economic developer, we could go to places like New York City and Connecticut where it's much more expensive, and tell them about how much less expensive it is to live in Vermont, how much less expensive properties are, how much less expensive it is to start a business, and have those people who have some business experience come to Bennington, start a business, and take advantage of all the quality of life issues that we all know and enjoy. So again, this goes back to economic activity and getting rid of, making Bennington a more prosperous place, but identifying the fact that Bennington has much more to offer, and taking those people who are spending exorbitant amounts of money and saying, look, there's better opportunities up here in Vermont, come up here, we'll take care of you, we'll invite you to start your business, we'll do whatever we can to help you do that.
Okay, Mr. Culkin?
You know, a lot of people up here are saying it's an insulting label, welfare town, but you know, when I talk to some people who work up in Montpelier, you know, we're known as subsidy city. You know, the state pays Bennington a lot of money to house, you know, a certain demographic, maybe, you know, people who've served time, people who go to rehab, just whatever the situation is, and they end up staying here and they end up getting benefits from the state. And then, you know, we have another issue with, you know, too many of our young girls in Bennington becoming mothers way too early. You know, that's a drain on the system. You know, the stroller races up and down Main Street, it really isn't, you know, a good image for Bennington. It gets easy to stay on assistance. You know, what is there to look forward to when, you know, you're getting your monthly checks, and then you have another baby, and, you know, you get more money, and, you know, there isn't a lot of incentive to grow. So unfortunately, subsidy city is a real thing here. We get paid a lot of money to take what the Arlington's don't want, in Manchester and Brattleboro and Stone or whatever else, let's just put them down in Bennington. We'll take them because we have the social services, which is great, we have, you know, the courts and the rehabs and many of those facilities. But, you know, so what do we do to reverse the trend? Well, you know, the rehabs are great, but are we going to help some of these people when they get out of rehab find jobs that aren't available? It's not so simple. Well, let's just find them jobs, and we need jobs, and hey, everyone, come move up to Vermont and start jobs, it's not that easy. You know, we have a big disconnect in training with jobs that are available, so it's not such an easy answer, but I hate the label subsidy city, and I would love to change it, but the fact of the matter is, you know, that's what we are right now.
Okay, Mr. McDonough will be the first candidate to answer the next question. Does the Bennington Police Department have all the resources they need to effectively deal with Bennington's drug and crime problems? If not, what initiatives would you take as a member of the Select Board to increase funding for our police department?
Well, first of all, I think that one of the things we know about our police department in terms of need is that for a few years now, for many factors, they have not been staffed fully to the level which they felt was appropriate. I think the town has taken measures to get that staffing level to where it needs to be. Some of those factors were presumably cost, they were also involved training. So I think that our police department is in a very positive place relative to that specific challenge that they had been facing. I think beyond that, the answer to the question is not so much, what would I, as a Select Board, feel that our police department needed to provide the safe community, which I do believe they do, but to listen to the police department, to help us understand what their challenges are, and their challenges are many, they're complex. I have the utmost respect for police officers and the jobs that they do, but I think that we have to, we have to listen to what they describe as their needs and their shortcomings, and fulfill them as best we can within the constraints of what we've talked about, and that is the ability to tax our population.
Mr. Miller?
I think the police department is well-led, great leadership at this time, but I think they're going through some changes, certainly challenges, they're right at the forefront, a lot of these challenges we just referred to. So we need to give them all the support we can to make sure that they have what they need to do their job. I think part of that's an ongoing, continuing process where officers retire and you replace them, and so you've got to be constantly aware of that. And I would fairly quickly get off the hot seat and ask the chief and others, you know, what do they need? I don't pretend to be an expert on law enforcement, but I believe they're doing an excellent job, and I think that'd be a great question to have with the chief, is what other kind of help and support could they have?
Mr. Pembroke?
I've had the benefit of having a great deal of interaction with the police force, and before anybody jumps to conclusions, no, I have not been in handcuffs. But...
This week.
Hey, you're not supposed to interact with me. But no, all seriousness, I have, in a number of different reasons and occasions and subject matters, have had a great deal of interaction with our police force. I don't have anything negative to say about them. I don't observe needs that they may have, that doesn't mean that there aren't some that they do have. My observation of the budget process is, the Select Board typically works hard to fund them as well as they possibly can. Doesn't mean there aren't needs out there somewhere, but it's, it's an important element of our community. I, for one, am frankly rather proud of our police force. And again, maybe it's because I've had closer, more direct interactions for various reasons than some others, but they've always been very professional, very accommodating, very informational, and, you know, I think they do a great job.
Okay, Mr. Brady?
I think they have done a great job in the last few years with starting to clean up the drugs. I think the Select Board works hard to take care of them. Last year, in this struggling economy, we did give them a new police car, we gave them a new officer. What I think we could look more is for grant money, you know, to help with, I know, like Homeland Security, they got all the things that go on the car to check registrations and everything, and you can do things like that through grants. And I think another thing the police chief would agree with is, we need the, this again would call for legislative action, Senator Shear's doctor shopping bill. It's so easy for these people to get multiple prescriptions for Percocet, Vicodin, things like that, put them in different pharmacies and be picking up, and sell them on the streets. So what the bill does is it starts a bank where the pharmacists can all see every pharmacy, what they're giving out to the same person. So there are creative things we can do without spending more money, I think our police are well taken care of.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
I have no idea, and I am embarrassed to say that, but I really don't. I have never had a time in Bennington where I felt unsafe recently, or I felt it was unsafe for my kids. So my sense is that the police is doing an excellent job. What I read in the papers looks good, my firsthand experience is good, but it seems to me that the test of a good police force is, you don't really know how well it's working if you don't feel it. So it seems to me we're probably on a very good track now. I suspect, and this is hypothetical, but I suspect if we are continuing to have very frugal municipal budgets, I think the police is something like twenty-nine percent of the budget, Stu's in the back, so he may correct me, but if we're only going up one percent a year on our spending, I suspect that it's possible that we are not keeping up with some of the things that they need, and I'm thinking technology, and I'm thinking manpower, but I don't know, I really don't. And if elected to the Select Board, I would certainly make it the highest priority to listen to what they thought their priorities were for the community.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
Having been a part of budget negotiations with the town, I can say that, you know, the police department has done a very good job, and not only has Chief Doucette taken advantage of grant money, I can give you a very specific example of where Chief Doucette applied for and got grant money through the Department of Homeland Security for, I'm going to screw up on the phrasing for the name of this piece of equipment, for lack of a better phrase, switchboard, Paul, is that right? The new police equipment?
We replaced our entire radio system.
There you go. That's it. But more than anything, what I want to point to and point of pride is that, you know, two years ago, we were front-page news around the country about drug activity twice, and we also made it into the New York Times, well. In budget negotiations this year, when we were sitting down and I asked the chief, you know, we haven't seen too much of you in the front page, is that because there's less drug activity? And the chief was even-handed about it. Yes, there has been some, it doesn't mean that it's been obliterated altogether, but because the police department has taken such a tough stance, we've made it a very unwelcome place for drug dealers to want to come and spend time. Now, more to the point of what the Select Board can do, jeez, I don't know, except to continue to do what I think is in the best interest of the people, of course, and to work with the chief to address the issues that need to be addressed.
Okay, Mr. Culkin?
You know, we're kind of lucky here that, you know, we don't have a Ferguson situation or some of the things we've seen in New York City or other towns. You know, I've read some horror stories about Bennington Police Department fifteen, twenty years ago, that led to some lawsuits and just some, you know, really ugly stuff. That said, we have a great police department. I'm not saying that because our chief is here now. They do their job. Whenever we want a cop and we call them, they show up promptly, and they do their job, and they do whatever they can to help us or diffuse a situation. We're lucky to have that here. As far as the Select Board helping them budgetary, you know what, we just don't, you know, give them an open check, a blank check, but you know, if they need something, let's work with them. You know, they protect and serve us, it's not rocket science. You know, it's better to have a happy police force than have one that's disgruntled because we didn't give them something they needed. It's pretty easy. And I'd like to thank, you know, all the officers in Bennington, you know, and the county, and everyone just really, you know, who takes on this line for a living. You know, it's a tough job. We saw what happened in Ferguson, one thing can spiral out of control in the worst way, and that doesn't happen here, that's great. And they're making it much more difficult, as some of my colleagues here have said, to, you know, want to live an illicit life. You just don't read really about, you know, that many drug reads anymore and, you know, and all the other, you know, front-page articles and stories that have happened. So again, thanks Chief Doucette for whatever you're doing, because you're making life here just a little bit easier. We don't have to worry about rogue cops like the town used to have to worry about fifteen, twenty years ago.
Okay, Mr. Laterno?
Well, at the risk of looking stupid, perhaps we should ask the police chief who's sitting back there what he needs. But in my little bit of research, I've been told that we have twenty-six people on the police force, not counting the chief and his administrators and the dispatchers in the office, and that breaks down to one man being assigned to drug work with the state task force, and another person who is involved constantly with assault and sexual assault behaviors, and the other remaining people are, I'm told, are four people on the day shift and the evening shift, and three people on the night shift, and that seems like a pretty thin contingent to me, but I don't know, and I haven't seen any data. I'd like to see information from the police department on what they think their problems are and what they need to solve them, and since I'm also on a school board, I'd be willing to go as far as telling the police department that if you think you need to do drug inspections in the high school, I'll support that.
Mr. Miller will be the first candidate to answer the next question. Which do you think will prove to be the greater economic engine for our town, Main Street or North Side Drive? Mr. Miller?
It sounds like a numerical question. I think both are important. If I just look at the size, I suspect there's more growth opportunity out on North Side Drive, but we have plenty of places for new businesses to come in along Main Street. I hate to see us pit one against the other, I think they're both important. And I think that downtown is extremely important, and there's a tremendous opportunity to grow businesses there. I think they may be different than the type of businesses you'd get on North Side. If it were purely a mathematical equation, again, I suspect there's more opportunity out in North Side Drive, but I don't think that's how you make decisions. I think you have to do, I think you have to encourage growth in both areas, they're different, and they're both important, so I resist the mathematical equation.
Okay, Mr. Pembroke?
They are both important, they're both very important. North Side Drive has been woefully underdeveloped for way too many years. The prime example's been brought up here a couple of times, technically at North Bennington Road, you know, that corridor down through there is Johnson Controls, the former Johnson Control site. In my opinion, that is probably the most valuable piece of property in town. It is visible from 279, from 7A, and from 7. And if we would just unleash the shackles that we've had on it for the last twenty years, we could generate enough revenue to start to put investments into downtown, which will help that piece of the community grow as well. You know, there's, if you want to talk about a mathematical formula, it's very simply North Side Drive and North Bennington Road. The amount of development that can take place there to generate the revenues, to help us invest into the downtown, into business recruitment, which I do agree with, we need to significantly increase that resource, but the best place we can get it is North Side Drive.
Okay, Mr. Brady?
I think that's one thing that has held back both Main Street and North Side Drive for years, is the mentality of us against them. The two go hand in hand. If you can grow North Side Drive, it's going to create the revenue on the grand list.
If you can grow North Side Drive, it's going to create the revenue on the grand list to begin to do, make some changes on Main Street. We can do the church street thing without closing down the streets. I mean, more theater, look at what Old Castle's done down there, bringing people downtown for the night. We need more theaters, galleries, financial institutions, specialty shops, put them over here, and restaurants. And if we build up a retail base on the North Side Drive, people will come here for the day to shop instead of everybody leaving Bennington. The Banner did a couple of years ago a question online that said, "What do you buy out of town?" They asked people in Bennington, "What do you buy out of town that you can't buy here?" And they said, "Everything." They leave here for big screens, for cars, for, you know. If we could get people to come here to shop and then maybe go downtown for dinner after, take in a show after, you know, we've got to stop the Main Street against North Side Drive mentality. They need to be built together, side by side. It benefits everyone if they both grow.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
No question about it. They both are important, and I think our zoning reflects that. I think our town plan reflects that. I wouldn't wade into saying which one was more important than the other, but I would say that I think if we were to think of it in terms of where is their potential, the most potential for the select board to do a lot of good work, I would say probably it's downtown. So out on North Side Drive, there's perhaps a lot more potential for the free market to do good work on some of the vacant properties, like the old drive-in theater and the property behind the old Griswolds. If we want to think about something we can do as a select board, if we really want to do something, we can work on some of these big downtown properties, but it's going to take a lot of work. And the first part is realizing that many of the properties that we have our eyes on downtown are private property at this point. And that means that we have to be involved in long, delicate negotiations that involve a lot of care and a lot of patience. So when Brattleboro redeveloped the Brooks House, the Brooks Hotel, which is that great big brick building in downtown Brattleboro that's changing the way Brattleboro is, they had to spend $22 million to fix that building up, that historic building up, for a building that grand lists at about $9 million. So $22 million spent for a $9 million building. That doesn't make sense for any investor. But if the town gets involved and we work with both local investors and foreign investors to work with the new market tax credits and maybe get a TIF district going there and do a lot of the different things you can do to bring in creative money, then we might be able to do something that was much more creative and much more responsive to what we want to see in downtown. It's also really important, I think, that whatever we do downtown is highly sensitive to the local needs, and as much as possible, it'd be great if it was locally owned, and by locally, I mean in the kind of Vermont area. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
I agree with the basic idea that it shouldn't be one against the other. And to my own mind, I always think of the downtown as the personality of Bennington and North Side Drive as the engine, the thing that garners us the most income with respect to property taxes and sales taxes, for that matter. But I want to go back to my idea about acquiring the Greenberg property and finish fleshing out what I've done and what I've learned. And that is, to the best of my knowledge and the most recent information, that property is, the owners of that are not interested in breaking that up. Now, the opportunity with a bond with that property is that we could acquire it under contract without having to spend a dime. And we know, I know, and other people in the town office know, that there has been expressed interest on at least two of those pieces of property. One is Old Castle. The second is the Greenberg's Hardware Store. There have been five serious inquiries about starting that up again. Now, if the town were to get that under contract and talk about a bond, if we were to, if we were able to get two of those properties, significant pieces of those properties, under contract, we would therefore lessen the amount of the bond that we would have to take out. So let's say those two properties, 1.5 million and 300,000 for Old Castle, that's 1.8 million out of the $2.7 million price on that piece of property. So when we go to a bond bank, we have two of those pieces under contract so that when we, when and if we have to float a bond, we've lessened it by almost two-thirds.
Okay, Mr. Culkin?
It's not us against them, North Side versus Main Street. I think, you know, we're all singing that tune. I think North Side is great for the big box, the Walmart, Home Depot. We have car dealerships there. We have restaurants. I think North Side's coming along fine, and it will continue to come along fine. I think also downtown is where we develop the mom and pups, you know, and I think the big way to do that is, you know, I've had my idea, it's been well talked about, is selling, getting a hotel into the Putnam, you know, Hilton Canopy, if we can, you know, make that happen. I called a developer and he's interested in coming down to look at the property. And, you know, what if something happens and it becomes a Hilton? Everything changes, I think, overnight. Who wouldn't want to be connected or downtown next to a Hilton? I think a flood of businesses would come into Bennington and start up, and you grow downtown that way. But, you know, that's still many steps away. But the good news is we have an investor, we have a developer who's interested in at least looking at the Putnam. So that's a great start because it's been there forever and, you know, it's just sitting there. We can never really truly develop downtown until that sells. It's the big elephant in the room and it's frustrating and we all want something, you know, we all want something to happen there. We want it to sell. So, you know, getting to this, you know, other idea with, well, let's float a bond, I'm not sure that's a great idea. Unless we don't have to pay a single penny as taxpayers. I mean, I don't know if we've really shown ourselves to be a really good real estate agent here. You know, look at the Al Carroll Motorslot. I don't know if we made that deal to the best of our ability to bring in, you know, the kind of money we should have. If we can, if the town can buy the Putnam without, you know, without taxpayers having to pay a single penny, then let's have that discussion. But otherwise, I think a bond, we have enough taxes as it is. Taxes here are high enough.
And I'll have to stop you there, Mr. Laterno?
I don't think it's a question of is, should develop and go to downtown or to North Side Drive. I think the market will determine that in time. They're two distinct areas, and the businesses that are going to be located in each will be determined by what the market calls for. Downtown, you do not have large expanses of property where a big box store could set up. And you do have that on North Side Drive, so obviously the market is going to go to North Side Drive for that. The two areas were very different even when I was a kid. North Side Drive is where the circus would set up. In fact, they used what's now the parking lot for Walmart to set up. Downtown Bennington was the area you went to and you could do everything you needed in a matter of a couple of hours downtown. You had three or four clothing stores there, maybe more. You had all the banks. You had barber shops galore around town, restaurants galore. You could do everything in a matter of a couple of hours downtown and meet all your friends at the same time. I don't know that we're ever going to return to that type of downtown, and I don't know that that type of downtown exists in most communities anymore in the United States because cars got bigger, trucks got bigger, the railroads stopped carrying goods, so the big stores moved to the outskirts of town that could accommodate the big vehicles and tractor-trailers and so forth. So I think we need to encourage the smaller stores that can fit into the properties that are available on Main Street and North Street to move there. Are they going to become giant moneymakers? Probably not. But it's what we're going to get, and I suppose you could have a whole collection of boutique-type small stores there, but you also have to look at demographics. Probably one-third of our population has low income.
And I'll have to stop you there, Mr. McDonough?
I have pretty much dedicated my professional life to our downtown and its vitality and have done that within the context of understanding that culturally, we have, over a period of 50-plus years, 60 years, we've culturally changed the way in which we shop and do business. And because of that, both our downtown, as everybody said, and North Side Drive are immensely important to our economy. I think that as a municipality, we have responsibilities in both areas. We have responsibilities to see to it that the traffic congestion and the things that make our necessary journeys to North Side Drive for goods and services frustrating and challenging and uncomfortable. I don't think anybody revels at the idea of traversing North Side Drive to get the things that they need. I think that, in the same token, because the market has moved to places like North Side Drive and Shelburne Road, we have to pay attention to the vitality of our downtown. If you think of the places you've visited and you ask people who have visited Bennington what they remember about Bennington or what you remember about places you've been, I dare say it would not be their commercial strip area. They're the same everywhere we go. What people remember about a community, what generates the quality of life in a community is its core, its downtown, and we have to pay attention to both.
Okay, thank you. Well, this brings us to the conclusion of the question-and-answer portion of tonight's candidate forum. Each candidate will now have two minutes to leave us with a closing statement, beginning with Mr. Pembroke.
Thank you. I want to thank WBTN, Cat TV for hosting this tonight. I think it's been very informative. Didn't agree with all the questions, but I think there were some very good questions here tonight, and I think there's some great answers. Bennington is fortunate to have what may be a unique opportunity, to have eight options for two choices. And very good people, I know most, all these people very well, and we're all good people. And, but I think there are some distinct differences. There's three or four people up here that support the status quo, and I don't. I am a clear person of change. I believe we can change. I believe we must change. I think I've articulated my ideas, my positions, my passions fairly clearly. I support economic growth. I support job creation. I support the grand list growing. I think that you will find that I am very straightforward. Those of you that know me or have observed me on television in the past, I am very accessible. I am very honest. I am very open, and if I'm asked a direct question, I will provide a direct answer. I think that we are in a rare opportunity to change the course of this community. And my fear is if we don't change it soon, it may be irreversible. I asked for your vote Tuesday, and I want to thank all the candidates for stepping forward and putting themselves on the line. It's not an easy process, and I applaud them all and thank them for being part of this process.
Okay, Mr. Brady?
I'm Peter Brady. I was raised here, raised my children here. My children left here to try to make a better life for themselves. My daughter had a three-bedroom house and drove a Lexus while living in Texas, living the American dream. My son, in less than a year in Texas, had a great job and a new car. I have served Bennington as a justice of the peace, been BSD and MAU Board Moderator. I served Bennington County as Vice President of the AFL-CIO, served two terms in the Vermont House of Representatives. I reported out many contentious bills for my committee, General Housing and Military Affairs. I was elected clerk of that committee in my second term and controlled the schedule of moving any legislation through that committee. I had four of my bills signed into law in my last term by Governor Howard Dean. One of my bills had 147 cosponsors. I can build a consensus. Christmas Eve, I lost my daughter. I brought my son back here in pieces. In my mourning, so many people came to me and asked me to run, asked me to fight for this town, and that's why I'm here tonight, because I think we've just done the same thing over and over. We need to grow the grand list and start some economic development. Rezone Johnson Controls, start an incubator building, increase the advertising budget, get us online. I asked for your vote on Tuesday. Give me a shot. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you very much. Thank you, WBTN, Cat TV, fellow panel members, and you audience that have sat out there so patiently through all of this. I am, I'm a candidate for change, but I'm also going to invoke my great-great-grandfather who used to always say about progress, "I'm not going to burn down the house to get rid of a hornet's nest in the attic." And I think that's a little bit how I feel about where we are right now. There is perhaps a hornet's nest or two in the attic, and we do need to get those out, but I'm not going to burn down the house. I see tremendous progress being made in Bennington, and I would cite the work of the Bennington Economic Development Committee that's really making wonderful connections between the schools and with some of the marketing efforts they're doing and reaching out to industry and trying to figure out where the gaps are in the labor market and working with training. There's a lot of reason for optimism, and I think we need to build on that. I think we need to build on that optimism. We're, the truth of the matter is, right, we're fighting a demographic so that, the studies say that Bennington and the southern Vermont is going to go down 3.5% over the course of the next 20 years, and we've got an aging population. So it's not an easy situation for us to be working on, but if we want to keep Bennington from kind of slipping into oblivion quietly, we need to make it a place that people want to be. We need to make it a place that millennials will come back, the millennial generation, and people may have heard me talk about my girls who are both just about ready to go off to college now. I'd love it if in 10 years or so, they would consider coming back to Bennington because there were things to do, there were jobs with growth opportunity, and there were lots of fun outdoor things for them to enjoy. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to tonight.
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
Thank you for this opportunity. You know, Bennington is a great place, but without its people, it's just pretty buildings. And doing the people's work is why I'm here. It's been a privilege over the last three years to serve the people of Bennington, and I've taken it very seriously. With every vote that I cast, I swore to myself that I would act in the best interests of all the people of Bennington, not just some of them. And that sometimes meant going against the grain, but there's an old saying that only dead fish swim with the stream. Number one, I voted for jobs, jobs, and jobs. Now, the next board can spend more of its time rehashing some of the same old ideas, but we can move forward in a new direction. But wasting time on issues that board after board has examined over the last 20 years is reckless. Now, I'm not opposed to new ideas and new approaches. Those are great things that should be considered. Over the last three years, I've drawn my share of the lightning, but I don't think you expected anything less of me. I've stood alone, but I've always stood up for the best interests of the people of Bennington, no matter if it hurt me or it helped me. I hope that you'll decide to cast your vote for me and reelect me. I'd like to continue to act in the best interests of all the people of Bennington.
Okay, Mr. Culkin?
Well, we're getting close to the end of the road here. It's been a great process and journey the last six or seven weeks. This is the first time I've ever done this, you know, become a politician. I'm not a politician. I was a newspaper reporter for a long, long time, and now I'm the manager of an art gallery downtown, and that doesn't make me exempt from not understanding, you know... And that doesn't make me exempt from not understanding, you know, what goes on here. And it's been a struggle here. We are a great town. I love Bennington, you know, Old Bennington, North Bennington, all the Benningtons. Anyone who knows me knows I like to think big and do big and swing for the fences. You know, I like to, even if I strike out, at least I swung. It's better than leaving the bat on your shoulder. You know, it's why Manchester thrives. They're not afraid to take chances. Manchester's kicking our butt, and they have for years, thanks to Ben Hoben. He came here first. We said, "No, we don't really want you." He went to Manchester. They're a gold town. Brattleboro tries. They take big chances, and they thrive because of it. St. Albans, they're thriving. Stowe, they're thriving. I think Bennington can thrive. We have the answers. We've had the answers for a long time. I think we're afraid sometimes to swing for the fences and take action on them. So, you know, today I was on Facebook, and the feed refreshed itself. And, you know, up came a meme with a guy with a quote. And, you know, it was James Baldwin. And the quote was, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it's faced. It's time to face the truth. We're struggling. We really are. We're subsidy city. People up in Montpelier kind of laugh at us. A lot of reasons why." I'm a team builder. I'm a consensus builder. I'd like to get to the bottom of why this is happening. I'd like to put a lot of the answers we have into motion. But it is possible to be great like we once were, but there's a lot of work to do. So on Tuesday, please vote for-
I'm going to have to stop you there. Mr. Laterno?
I grew up in Bennington. I'd love to see it return to the vibrant community that it was back in the '60s and '70s and probably into the '80s. I think everybody would. I don't think that's ever going to reoccur because of economic changes that are going well beyond Bennington. I think we can stem the tide of where we are going if we have a change in attitude on the Select Board. And that's why I decided to run for the Board. And I don't have a lot of concrete answers at this moment. That's going to take more research and more discussion with other people. Once upon a time, we had a town manager in Bennington named Ed Lamb, who had been the town manager for many years. And occasionally, he was in discussions with my father about certain things that weren't going well in town. And he would intimate how he would try to change the direction of the selectmen by educating them, and that it never seemed to work, and that my father was facing that issue. And in one conversation, Mr. Lamb said, "You can't fight City Hall, but you can sure burn it down." And he didn't mean literally. He meant that sometimes you have to collect information and point things, make things so pointed that nobody can ignore them. And if I'm elected, that's what I will try to do.
Okay, Mr. McDonough?
There's a certain performance quality to what we have all embarked on, seeking a position on our Select Board. And it's sort of the necessary part of the process to help people understand the way, as a Select Board member, we might think and the views that we might have. I stake my candidacy on being a Select Board member, on the commitment that I have made to this community for many, many years, and the hard work that I have offered to this community for many, many years. Not because I want to be rewarded for that, because I want the community in which I live to be the best possible place that it can be. I've never made a decision as a Planning Commission member or as a hard-working member of the Better Bennington Corporation, or now as a participant on the Bennington Economic Development Partners. I've never made a decision which I felt would prevent this community from growing. My focus has always been to make Bennington a better place. And if there is a pledge to be made as a candidate for Select Board, that's my pledge, that I would love to have the opportunity to continue to make those choices for my community in a new venue, and that being as a member of your Select Board. And I thank you.
Mr. Miller?
I do believe that we are at a crossroads. We have many challenges here in Bennington. Property taxes, water sewer taxes, economic growth, which is jobs and the grand list, public health, whether it be obesity or drugs or dental care. But look around. Look at how many candidates we have. And look at the quality of the candidates. And what does this tell us? It tells us that our friends and our neighbors are concerned. They want us. They've asked us to step up and try to help. Well, what can we do? I think what we have to do is play civil, play nice. We have to try to reduce this them-versus-us-type attitude. We have to stop the finger pointing and turn it around and look at what I call the Vermont tradition. That's from the Dorothy Canfield Fisher book of the same name, 1950s, or the Vermont Way, where, and we heard it earlier, "Vermonters help Vermonters. Neighbors help neighbors." Neighbors, we all have tough times. When our neighbor has a tough time, we walk across the street and we help them. When a community has a tough time, the neighbors need to pull together. The community needs to pull together. Good neighbors make good communities. And that's what we need to do, is work together on these challenges. When I think of the gateway that we are, that means bringing in productive people, people who can create jobs. It means trying to slow the influx of people who are not so creative or who are preying on our weaker members. So I would urge you to vote. Vote any way you want. We've got a lot of good people up here. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, and that's going to wrap things up for this special edition of News and Views. We'd like to thank the town for giving us the use of the firehouse. We'd like to thank Cat TV for filming and broadcasting this evening's forum. I would like to thank Tracy Barrett, Aaron Sawyer, and Spencer Sweet at WBTN. Of course, we would like to thank all of our candidates. We all appreciate their willingness not only to run for office, but to serve in office. It is thankless and difficult work, and each one of them is to be commended. Election Day is Tuesday, March 3rd. Vote for the candidates of your choice, but vote. We will now return to WBTN's regularly scheduled program of fine music. Good night, and have a pleasant tomorrow.